We're short one regular member today, so I'll ask Jeff to sit down. All the two items that we have. Do we have minutes? No minutes?
They didn't come in time for your packets, so we'll hold off until your next meeting.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is take Muriel Drive out of order. Anybody here from Muriel Drive? So, Muriel Drive has asked for a withdrawal without prejudice. So, there's gonna be no action on it tonight, and they're gonna come up with Plan B, I guess. Okay?
So, no prejudice means they can come back later on?
If they need to.
Yeah.
If they need to. We aren't sure what is gonna happen because we're not privy to that right now.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, can I have a...
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Please come up to the microphone and give us your name, just so that we have it.
Elizabeth McGuire for Easy Street. At one of the previous meetings, it came up that this particular parcel was previously zoned non-billable, but that apparently the assessors changed that zoning and made it billable. No, it's not?
It was perceived to be billable.
Okay. Will it go back to the... Because if you look online, it's marked as billable.
That's so we can get the tax revenue to support the town.
Right.
At this point, we don't know what's gonna happen. We just know they withdrawn the original petition, which made Easy Street a billable... Well, they came to us to see if they could make it a billable lot. That's been withdrawn. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future because we haven't had anything brought to us or staff at this particular time. Jeff?
So, while we did receive a request for withdrawal without prejudice that the board will act on tonight, there was also a proposal for one dwelling on the two lots. So, the commissioner has rendered a zoning opinion that that proposed dwelling over the two lots, where it met all the setbacks, did not necessitate, at this time, any variance or other special relief. So, it's our guess that we'll be seeing some sort of application at some point in the future for that single-family dwelling on the combined lots. So, there won't be two separate lots anymore, is our best guess. But we do not have a formal application to back that up at this time.
Alright, thank you.
But you can feel free to check in with us, and we can certainly advise you if we receive any such application.
That's my pick.
No problem.
Okay, could we have a... First of all, I got Jeff on there. Okay, can we have a motion to withdraw without prejudice to zero Muriel Drive?
So moved to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business, which is the first item, 63 Main Street, special permit for an ADU conversion. Left in the microphone, tell us your name, what you'd like to do. Can we open this public hearing?
That would be great.
I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now you're up.
Okay. My name's Sarah Malio, 94 Harvard Road in Littleton, Mass. I'm the architect representing Diane and Charles Grandine, who own the property under discussion at 63 Main Street. They... Diane and Charles Grandine fell in love with this historic home when they saw it and are very enthusiastic about restoring it to comfortable family estate with their daughter. The existing barn is a two-story structure with two full floors and a footprint of 1,194, 92 square feet existing. And there are two floors, so it's a total of 2,384 square feet existing. We really wanted to adhere as close as possible to the spirit and letter of the zoning bylaws, so we restricted the living space to the first floor of the barn in our design to turn it into an ADU. And the second floor, half of it, we opened up with the library mezzanine, opened up to the upper roof, and as well, and the other side, just as storage. There's no intent for any living space, other than just on the first floor. And we've... So, through this, we've made every effort to preserve the historic nature of this barn, to give it another 120 years of useful life. By changing it from the horse stable to the ADU, we believe we're increasing its usefulness and the... Made it more readily, a bit easy to facilitate more maintenance of the building. This historic property is unique to the town and is obviously important to the town. Based on the town meeting, wishing to preserve it, we believe that by pursuing this project in this way, we are preserving it in the best way, trying to adhere to the 900 square feet. We'd have to demolish part of it, which I don't think anybody wants to do that. By just keeping the ADU in the existing first-floor footprint, that way, we make as little change to the existing landscape of the historic center of town. We add another housing unit without changing the existing historic nature. We're making fairly minimal changes to the... Just to the exterior envelope, just to add some doors and windows and a couple of canopies to protect from the rain. So, we believe it's a net benefit to the town by adding the housing stock, keeping the historic nature of the town intact by not altering this historic barn significantly. And the current construction schedule of the project is we're gonna work on the main barn... The... Sorry. The main house first, and we're actually rushing to get the permit in because this old house is looking to start filming soon for the main house.
So, can you repeat that? You're gonna start working on the main house first?
First, yes.
And what's the timeframe for that?
They wanna finish up by March.
Okay, and then when are you gonna start construction on the ADU unit?
Hopefully shortly after that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
Any questions?
So, yes, so, the library mezzanine area.
Yep.
Tell me what that's gonna be.
It's gonna be a walkway that goes around the open area with bookshelves around it. And it's just gonna be enough space, three feet, enough space for people to walk and move around the bookshelves.
So, it's only three feet wide?
Slightly more to allow for the bookshelf, so I think it's four feet wide, one foot for the bookshelves, and three feet for the path.
And the center is open?
Yep, the center's open.
And the walls up there are gonna be finished, insulated?
Yep.
The whole thing?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, I have no problem with this. I just think that that mezzanine area needs to be added into the square footage.
Okay.
Which I don't have a problem with. I just think...
Well, the mezzanine area is... The walking... The mezzanine walking area is at 314 square feet.
But that's not part of the 1,100, is it?
Um, no. No. So, you didn't want that added into the 1,100? So, it's 1,400 for the...
What is the board thing? It's gonna be part of the living area, more or less.
It should reflect.
Okay.
I just think it should reflect that.
Okay.
Are you alright with that?
Yeah.
Staff?
Of course.
Oh, yeah, right.
Really, it's... If it's going to be treated as part of the space, as long as any decisions this board makes reflects that, we just want the proper paper trail for going forward.
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
I just think that's important.
If there's any changes in the future, obviously, you'll come back to this board for any advice to change.
Right, right.
We don't anticipate, but...
So, how many square feet was that, 314?
Uh, yeah, 314, so add that, so that would be 1,000...
500.
500 and 6, right?
Yes.
What's the access to the mezzanine? These stairs?
Uh, there's the stairs, yep.
And other than that, it's gonna be wide open over there?
Yep. Yeah, wide open over the living area in the center of the mezzanine, yeah.
No, I meant at the top of the stairs.
Um...
It says storage.
Yeah, it's storage. So, we are... We do have a floor over top of the bedroom that's not open all the way up.
But are there gonna be any walls to separate that area, or when you walk up the stairs, you're gonna just have this big, wide-open area?
We do have a wall separating the mezzanine from the storage area.
But nothing in the storage area?
No, nothing in the storage area.
On top of the stairs, the storage area is wide open?
Yep.
So, basically, half the second floor is wide open?
Yeah.
There's a second set of stairs going up to another storage area.
Yeah.
Perhaps, or just...
It's honestly, the attic storage is... Has only like...
Small space.
Teeny-tiny space with headroom. It's really not terribly usable.
I mean, my only concern is that storage area gets developed after the fact.
Well, we can condition that.
How's that gonna be enforced, I guess?
Well, they got a significant building project ahead of them with a house and a ADU, so I'm sure our code enforcement's gonna be there often.
I mean, I'm all for the project, I'm just... Previous things have come back and bit us in the butt on stuff like this, where there's an open area and it turns out to be something else.
I think the best we can do is condition it. So, do you understand what I was just saying about that?
Yes.
Out of the order of conditions, there never can be anything in there, other than storage?
Yep.
Okay. So, does anybody else have any conditions that'd like to see in place? So, the only other condition that I have, actually, it's two. Your timeframe is that you're gonna have this thing, the house, done by March.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna condition that the house has to be done by May 31st.
Okay.
I'm gonna give you a couple of months, in case there's an oops. And that the construction of this ADU will begin no later than June 31st. Does that sound reasonable?
It sounds reasonable. Just, it's relying on Charlie Silva. We signed the contract, it's all set, he's ready to go on it. How fast we get the permit?
Well, I think we can get it pretty fast.
That's what we need. The faster you get it, the faster this will get done.
So, the other thing is, if you get to May 31st and you're still not there, go back to us for an extension.
Yeah, that's what's the next step.
I'm tying your hands a little bit, but not tight.
Right. Like I said, Alan, he has a film group that has to be done much to much. Set back because much went by, and we're trying to develop it, try to get everything correctly on the building.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have anything else? So, are you... There's nothing in the house that's gonna be torn down, correct?
Just the signings are coming down, but we already discussed that with the store group. Everything that we went through, they approved of.
Okay. Well, typically, we have a 30-day rule. If you're tearing something down, it's gotta be in the dumpster and off by 30 days.
He has his own dumpster.
But that's... Yeah, so, but you're not... It'd be like if you were tearing the barn down, or a corner of a house.
Maybe siding on...
Yeah, that's...
No, it's just siding and trim and whatnot.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Anybody else?
Public?
Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of this? And I see a hand up from someone we know very well.
Ellen Hardy of 39 Main Street. You may recall that after the fire in 2016, and the town bought the property in 2018, I was one of the lead petitioners that brought this to town meeting, that said, "What this needs to be is a private home again, as it was when it was built in 1863." And that's what town meeting voted on. I think we're blessed to have the Grandines want to do with this property what they want to do. And Scott, to your point about can anything be torn down, the Grandines signed a 30-page historic restriction that are part of this, and it's a deed restriction, so they can't do anything, nor do they have any desire to do that. I strongly urge the board to approve this tonight, so we can finally get that beautiful house back to being what it should be. Thank you very, very much.
We agree. Anyone else in the audience? Anybody to speak against this project? Okay, seeing none? Is the board ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. So, with the conditions that we've mentioned, we're looking for...
Do you wanna close the hearing, Mr. Chair?
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Come on, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, we're looking for a special permit. Residence A, single-family residential and community center, special permit 90 days after the close of the public hearing. Variance 100 days after the application. What's that all about? So, we're looking for a special permit for an ADU, and a variance for a larger than ADU than a maximum size allowed.
So, if you vote on them concurrently, that's fine, but if you're gonna take one over the other, could you act on the variance prior to the special permit, please?
So, I think we can, if it's okay with the board, vote them on together? Okay, so, can I have that motion for a special permit for an ADU, and a variance for an ADU larger than the maximum size allowed?
Moved to...
How about a second?
Second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I will also vote in affirmative. So, staff has 14 days to write a decision. There is a 21-day appeal period, and after that, you're on your own. All right, good luck.
Good luck.
We look forward to seeing the progress. I think it's gonna be a great project. A great project. So, tell the Silver Brothers that Scott McKay will be looking for them. We went to high school together. As did the guy in the back row, sitting there. Okay, so, you're all set?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, we've done Muriel Drive. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is a discussion about the former Hicks property. We have Mr. Cataldo with us tonight. And to give you a little background, they did the original Hicks property, converted that to four units, which they did an excellent job at. And he's considering the barn next door to kinda do another project, kind of the same thing, to create four more units. So, he's here to kinda...
Test the pulse of the board.
Gentlemen, thank you for squeezing me in tonight on the short notice. So, as Scott said, we developed everything from the old office building to the right, known as Lot 4. Lot 4, we sold three of the four units, and we have Lot 5 sold as a ranch, and we're beginning construction on that. And Lot 6, we sold about 18 months ago. So, my son Michael and I have done the development work together. He can't be here tonight because he's babysitting.
So, what I'm here before you to discuss is, do we have the opportunity with you to request granting a variance, or do we fit in the conversion zoning bylaws? So, really, what I'm here to get tonight is a sense of how you gentlemen feel about us building four units there. There's presently... It's in the document on the last page. There is presently 6,270 square feet of barn space there. So, this plan that you see that says option three on the bottom of it, that's two units, two buildings, a total of four units. And the rendering that I gave you would be what the front elevation and the side elevation would look like. So, why do we wanna do this? So, this... These units give a very small footprint, about 1,800 square feet on the upper level, 1,500 square feet on the lower level. And they would be a good market rate unit for somebody that lives in Westford, or somebody that wants to move in Westford and downsize. Price point would probably be between $650,000 to $850,000 per unit, depending upon which one it is, and so forth. The rear... The bottom unit would have a walkout basement. What we're trying to do on this lot, gentlemen, is to take advantage of the location of the barn. Behind the barn, the grade falls away to the wetlands in the back, and that is a... If you look again back to that plan, you'll notice there's some boundary markers. That is the... I never say it right, but that's the riparian line, or line of, I think it's about 200 feet demarcation to the wetlands. So, these would sit down very low and tie into the units at Lot 4. Same architect would design them, so it would look like the continuation of a little village No impact on the school system. Our three buyers at Lot 4 are all in their 60s. Interestingly, the one unit that we have yet to sell is the age-restricted unit on Lot 4. For some ungodly reason, it hasn't sold yet, but we'll get there. So, I think, without telling Mr. Morissette his business, I think there's a lot of boxes that we could possibly fit in, whether it be the conversion bylaw unit. Another thought is, do we combine this with the permit on Lot 4 and go onto that? You gave me a lot of variances there. Does this become part of that lot? There's one combined unit. We're after additional units, whether it be for senior housing. If we don't restrict them all as seniors, maybe it gives somebody that's trying to get into the community an opportunity to get into Westford. However, if you said to us that, you know, no, we had to make it all senior, obviously, we would go with the way the board would decide that. So, just really trying to get a sense of the board. I don't own the property. I have a gentleman's agreement with the owner right now, that if we got the go-ahead or a good feeling from your board, we would move to an agreement to purchase it, and then begin the process of permitting with you folks. Okay. I personally think it's a great idea. I think that... It's interesting that the one unit you have is the age-restricted unit.
I know.
I think on this project, if we were to go forward, I wouldn't restrict the age limit, only because the other project has proven that it doesn't... You don't need to.
Right.
I think no impact on the school system is important, and I think the architecture over there is awesome. The whole place looks great. I think if you had a few more units, it's like you said, it's gonna be a small village. I drive by all the time, and I notice there's not a lot of cars parked outside, maybe one.
Right.
And I just think everything is just done very nicely.
Thank you.
Very nicely.
Thanks.
Any other comments from this board?
If we don't restrict the age, how is there no impact on schools? What's to prevent the family from buying?
I think there are only one two-bedroom units? These would all be two-bedroom units, Jeff. There wouldn't be... There wouldn't be any three-bedroom units at all. Because presently, the septic system on that lot is designed for five bedrooms, but I did talk with Matt Waterman, and he feels as though eight bedrooms would work on that. I mean, we got eight bedrooms on Lot 4's septic, so I'm confident that the soils would work well there.
You said the units are, what, 1,300 to 1,500 square?
Uh, no, Scott, they'd be... The base... Well, not basement, the lower level would be 1,500 to 1,800 possibly. The upper level could be as much as 2,000. We find that the sweet spot seems to be about 1,800 to 1,900. That's what we ended up with with the sizing in the four that we did. We can widen these units a little bit if we need to, to gain a little bit more square footage. Right now, the architect has got the basement unit as 1,500 square feet, and the upper is 2,000, so I was off a little bit. And I apologize. Jeff and Joe knew we were coming in, and we were scrambling to try to get this done this afternoon, and we just... I just got the rendering half an hour ago, so it's been sent to you in your email. Anybody else have any comments?
So, at the end of the day, how many... How big was the Hicks property, and how many units, if we accept this?
Acreage-wise, Dave, you're saying?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get a sense...
Lot 4 was 1.94, sir. And a lot of that, if you see the green in the back, a lot of that was Bob's Meadow, where the horses trotted in the back, and also, there was an animal cemetery back on Lot 4. And really, when you see that, where the green ends right there, that was all paving in the back. And that, we took a significant... We took all that out, and that's all now green area, and that's a kind of a no-mow zone back there.
I seem to recall there was maybe about 10 acres or so in six lots, something like that, that lot.
So, Lot... This is gonna be Lot 3?
That's correct.
And that looks like it's 1.5 acres?
Yes.
So, it's a little bit smaller than the one next to it. But as I mentioned, a lot of that lot was other stuff. And like I said, the way the topography works on that lot, it would give us the opportunity to get garages underneath on the lower level for those units, so that we would not be taking up and need as much impervious area. We try to keep that to a minimum. At Lot 4, if you notice where the office building was, that L in the back, that's all parking. That's where the garages are on that unit. So, we're trying to keep it so that we minimize the impervious area and try to keep as much green space as possible. And the units would be, if you look, you can see the overlay, how those two units would lay over the existing barn space. Thanks, Joe, for doing that. So, these two units are about 1,000 feet less than what's there?
That's correct.
So, we're looking for comments, concerns?
I like it. I think it's good use of space.
Mm-hmm. Jim, you have a comment?
The existing barn? What's going on with that?
Presently, well, that would all go away, Jim.
Oh, tough.
It would all be demolished in these units.
Entirely.
Yes. Yes. And one of the pushbacks that we've had on Lot 4 with some potential buyers is, we can't answer what is the disposition of that barn gonna be at the present time. So, that's why I started talking to the owner and said, "Look, you know, presently, he intends on keeping the barn there." on keeping the barn there with a five-bedroom house. And I don't know that that's the right thing or not, but anyway, he's also open to what we're asking you to do, so.
He's going to leave the big barn there and build a five-bedroom house with it?
That's his, that's the present plan.
Oh, Jesus.
That's, I mean, that's what he is, you don't see it on this, Scott, because this is only existing conditions that we overlaid on. But if you looked at the present septic plan, it shows a five-bedroom home attached to that barn.
I don't think that's the right play either, but that's not for us to decide.
So if this was allowed, ultimately, we'll have two single families and then two quads, basically, in the middle?
Right, right. And then two single families on the other side.
Yeah, two single families on each end, and then the two quads in the middle.
Yes.
Okay.
Which I think is a nice mix for the neighborhood.
And my son worked the law with the architect on this concept. This is not townhouse style like we did next door. This is two levels. So let's say Mrs. Jones wants to live at the lower level, she can pull in a garage and not have to go up a flight of stairs. So, so basically, no stairs involved in either one of these. This is just one concept. I mean, we could go with townhouse, we're, we're doing a duplex right now in Littleton, which is two levels, master bedroom on one floor, grandkids run upstairs or loft on the second floor. This, this is kind of a different concept, and I think it, it lends a little more opportunity to somebody elderly that needs their own independence.
Age and place.
Right.
David, you all set?
Good.
What do you think? Something you want to look at, look at in the future?
I think they've done a nice job over there. There was, because of the way that was sold, it really was a mystery.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Because nobody would come in and hate the whole thing.
Right, right. So now at least we got one person who's going to have two-thirds of it, basically.
Yeah, and one of, one of the deals fell through, right? Totally, right?
Oh, originally, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Are you happy with the so far?
Yep.
Jeff?
Absolutely.
Yep, Scott?
Yep.
Me?
Yep.
I also, so I think you got a lot of yes head shaking up and down, looks good. So if you want to come back formally with something, we'd be happy to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll get our wonderful Westford attorney on this, and we'll get started. So I'm sure we'll have a lot of conversations.
Can't wait to see the zoning opinion. Gentlemen, thank you.
All right, Joe.
Good night.
Hope to see you in the future.
Yes, thanks.
Take care.
Okay, so the last order of business is... Discussion regarding hybrid meetings. So what this means is, our select people have an inkling to have hybrid meetings, and it's not hybrid in the sense that we're not here. It's hybrid in the sense that they want audience to be hybrid, home on their computers watching and commuting in to us. So there's a letter here from Margaret Wheeler, who was the chair of the Conservation Commission. All the points in here that she has mentioned, I completely agree with. And, you know, my concern is that if we do have to go with hybrid meetings, who's going to run the hybrid portion of it? I don't feel that our staff should have to be concerned with that. I think there's enough going on in these meetings that they have to take notes, get the orders of conditions, and do all the other things, keep us in line, number one. And for them to be trying to keep track of who's in the audience, or what questions are getting asked, and getting names and everything else, because it's a public hearing, they have to give this information, I think it's a lot. Now, if the town decides that they want to hire someone to do this, I think that's wonderful. They certainly, if they can find the money to do that, they can find the money to run the town without an override. So I just think that, that's my opinion. Now, I'll ask for other opinions from this board, and we'll send a consensus to the select people to say, yes, we're in favor, no, we're not.
I, I would agree. And I think we kind of went to hell and back through COVID. Everybody trying to get, it was all remote, and we did that because we had to.
Right.
So now I think, post-COVID, we should go back to where we have done business. And I think a lot of businesses and other enterprises likewise have gone back to pre-COVID characteristics, and we should, I think we should, right the way we did before. We had to do the most stuff in COVID.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't think it's a good idea either. I think you never get a sense of where the people are who are on the remote channel location, whatever you want to call it. So I like to have the person here so I can see what they, how they actually feel about the, you know, the petition or whatever. So, and I just don't get a sense of that when it's remote. And it, I think it breaks up the, the rhythm of the meeting too, because you kind of have to ask them, do you have, sometimes you almost forget they're on there, right?
Yeah.
You have to ask them, do you have any opinions or whatever? So I just, I would agree with that. I just don't think it's, it helps for the meeting. So even though they believe and think it's, I think it actually distracts from the meeting more than helps to the meeting, so.
Are we supposed to lean on that? Is it committee, or are we just...
Jeff?
So...
Tight thing, or?
The Select Board has received some requests that they think about developing a, a policy for meetings, and whether or not to have hybrid meetings. So one of the things that came up is that, well, the Select Board, they do have a lot of authority in that they could require that of most boards. They can't necessarily require that of elected boards, but you are an appointed board, so they, they could mandate that. The request stemmed, I believe, from people having a greater opportunity to participate due to a variety of circumstances. So they're trying to be more inclusive. I know that at least the Planning Board wants to be protective of their, their public hearing processes until some concerns are addressed. At least the chair would prefer to carry on status quo until we have a chance to wrestle through some legal issues with counsel about what happens if things don't go according to plan. You know, what can you do to keep the public hearing on track, even continue that night, or avoid flaws? So it's not simple. I mean, there are some people that maybe have every intention of appearing in person, but they're suddenly sick or something, or something unexpected. And while they might be able to watch live, in the best case, they can't necessarily, you know, participate and contribute during that meeting. And so it's kind of a balance. It is about either convenience and allowing more people to participate versus, you know, the boards whose meeting it is, how do they want to go about it? And is there risk? You know, how much risk, how much extra effort, and what does that do to your, your process, you know? So they want to hear what you folks have to say before they make an opinion. So they want to hear about what your concerns are, whether you're inclined or not. I think we got a, I think we got a clear sense of that. But if you have any special concerns, we want to add that into the message back to the Select Board.
Anybody else have any concerns?
I'll agree with everything that's been said.
I think our board is pretty much the audience. I mean, the Select Board have a varied agenda. I think it has five different items that include five different groups of people of interest for one thing or another, from the far left of the room to the far right of the room. I think our board is just primarily people interested in the issues before us and their neighbors. That's pretty much who we get.
It's a process.
Yeah.
A legal process.
It's a process that, and I think we have a pretty good response. If people are interested, they come, they're vocal, we see them at the microphone. I think that's valuable.
So I do want to point out that comments that Chair of the Commission sent to the Select Board, that was just written by that individual. The Commission will be having a future discussion item on that. We're happy to share their thoughts and comments about that as well. And we'll have to repeat that process, I think, with the, the Planning Board proper as well. So we're happy to share their thoughts as well before perhaps we respond on behalf of this board. And obviously, we would run any draft, you know, by your folks, or at least the chair, if we're under a time constraint. That's acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay. So you got the flavor of this board?
I believe we do, sir.
Okay. Was there anything else staff had? So I guess as it looks now, and I'll speak out of turn a little bit, we have nothing in June. So you may get the month off. You're still going to get paid the same, though?
I was going to say.
Excellent.
Yeah, you're still going to get paid the same.
Checks still coming.
Wait by the mailbox.
I think the nine's on Friday, so we'll see.
Yeah, we get till Friday, so there could be something.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
So if there's nothing else, can we have an order to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.